...days and I'll look at the memo tomorrow and if I got other questions, I'll call you.
Okay. Hi, any, any else? Do a roll call vote, please.
I have a motion, right?
Yeah.
Second by Lazara.
Okay, I'm sorry, roll call.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No.
Alderman Coles.
No.
Alderman Murray Wesley.
Don't we have to pay this by law?
Well, if you vote yes. If you vote yes, it'll go on next week's agenda, not on the consent agenda, and the attorney will give you his opinion. Because if it fails, I don't, I believe it will not advance to the council next week.
Smarts.
I anticipated this vote result and I called the city attorney before the meeting. And as he always says, in a partial payment request, we are legally obligated to pay this. That's what he'll tell you next week.
So here's my vote. You gotta do it. Yes.
Well, let me ask you this question, Mr. Mayor. Does that go on the consent agenda now that passed?
No. No, it's three to two.
Okay, so it does not go.
It's not on the consent agenda.
Okay, because there are some concerns and questions I have on this bill, and that's why I voted no. Alderman Woods.
It won't be on the consent agenda.
While we're here, what are the questions?
Well, you brought up the questions about the liens. I want to see the liens, if they were collected. I don't think the liens are being collected the right way down there. I don't think they, I think Maxwell's getting the checks and not paying their subcontractors. I want to be able to see those liens, documentation. We gotta have records of it. I want to verify those. Okay, because that's a raise, that's a red flag right there that I'm concerned with.
Chairman, Chairman, can we just, Jeff, could you text Brad to come up here?
Everyone have them.
He's the one that pays the bills.
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, that was not the process before I arrived here with the city of Wooddale.
But again, we just sat here tonight saying this, this is going to be the process. So are we telling, let's back this thing up now that we opened this up. So we are telling us that we are paying contractors, that we are paying these contractors, these big contractors of this dollar amount, and we have not double-checked that they have paid their subcontractors? Someone better have an answer. Because you know what? If that's the case, and then you say we have never done it, so why? Someone better, give me some direction now. I'm, it really irritates me more now that we haven't been doing it and now we're doing it. So we paying contractors on big projects and we don't even know if their subcontractors are being paid. Come on.
Could I? Are we going to him? What we going to?
Go ahead.
I am not certain of the process that took place before I'm here. That's my message to you today.
Well, you just made a statement.
I'm certain of my message, of how it's done right now. So I, I don't want to speak to what was done prior, but I do know what's being done now.
First, Alderman Woods.
I'm, I'm fine if you made changes to tighten things up. I applaud it. I'm starting to get a little confused of, you know, what we were doing, what we are doing, when it changed. How did we know it changed if we didn't know what it was? Again, my, my only concern is looking out for the city and making sure that everybody's getting paid, we're doing it the correct way, we're collecting the proper waivers in a timely manner so that there aren't any issues. We have millions and millions of dollars worth of projects going on in the city, millions and millions of dollars going out to contractors and subcontractors, and if somebody's not watching it, it's pretty easy for something to fall through the cracks and next thing you know, there's going to be, you know, a big issue. So my concern is just that we're doing it correctly. And if that means that you came in and made some changes to make that system better or work properly, I'm all for it. I just want to know, and that's why I kept asking you redundant questions, because I didn't believe that that's the way it was happening before, the way that you were saying. So if what you were telling me is because that's the way you're handling it, then I'm okay with it. I just want to know that that's the policy, as opposed to if something happens, then you go, well, that's not what we do.
That's accurate. That's how I would prefer to handle it, and I think it's the right way for it to be handled. That's the process that's in place moving forward, and that's the process that we will adhere to.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Okay, as being Vice Chairman, I would like to see all the, all the waivers. And in return of that, since, since this is a new thing that I'm just finding out about these waivers and we just assumed that these contractors were being done, until I have those waivers, because I'm not going to sign another check without waivers. I thought this was being done. I find it very appalled that the city doesn't follow these waivers. If it wasn't doing it before, that they're not following, that they didn't follow it before. Is in contract, they should be. And I'm going to make a motion to table until I get those waivers of this bill. It's not, it's law that we have to pay the bill, but that doesn't say, I mean, we don't have the, doesn't it say in their contract about waivers? We, I mean, what kind of, if the engineers didn't put it in their, in their contract, you know what? Get rid of all the engineers then, because they're, it's a common thing.
Mayor, please.
The motion passed for next week. It's not on the consent agenda. It'll, the way, the issue with the waivers will be clarified by next week.
For the city council.
But I want to, I want all those waivers before the, before the council meeting, all of them, from day one.
I think you'd better ask.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's fine. We can get you the waivers. Just going back to what was done in the past, I don't think it's any different than what's being done now. You may remember in all your packets, whenever there's a project, there's a partial payment, there's a certified letter from the engineers that all waivers have been collected and certified, and you're allowed to issue the partial payment. So I'm not quite sure.
According to your Public Works Director, that he's just saying that it sounds like it wasn't done.
Okay. And I'm, and we're. Let's wrap this up. Go ahead.
Let me see if I can wrap it up this way. This is my sixth week of being employed with the city of Wooddale. I don't know every one of your practices, policies, or procedures. There was a notice of intent to lien that came in on this property that has been revoked. That part, that took me to a place where I felt like I needed to make sure that what we're doing was very systematic and very deliberate. And so I don't sit before you tonight knowing fully what the process was before, but I've made a change so that I can ensure everyone here on this committee that I have all that information before we release payment to a contractor.
What's?
All right. You know, this, this happened what, a few years ago when we done Dunley Street. The guy came in, did the street, got the street all done, and then about six months later, we get a letter from a lawyer where the laborers weren't paid when the company went bankrupt. So we had a lawsuit against us to pay, pay the laborers, yet he got his check. Well, that, this is something that did happen, that did happen here in Wooddale. So, I mean, maybe Eugene knows about it, and it's, it's, it's a thing that we should at least have. Everybody that works is, should get paid, and we should have something on it. I'm not, I'm not knocking the way you're doing it, it's just that, that's what it should be.
Okay.
That's why I voted no.
Hi, anything else? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Jeff. With these waivers, it's in the contract, correct? For the engineers?
I would assume that's in every contract like this.
Well, what is it? What's with these, we got Baxman Woodman, they're supposed to be over watching HR Green from what I'm understanding, how they're supposed to be working. So we got two engineer firms.
Okay, why don't we just wait till we get the waivers and see where we go back to the council? I, obviously, there's, there's a concern. Alderman Art Woods.
Jeff, do we have a written policy that we follow? I'm hearing conflicting things. I don't want to pick on anybody. I don't want to, I mean, there's got to be a procedure that we follow. Do we have something that's in writing, and if not, can we establish something in writing moving forward?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of cut this conversation off tonight since it's not really an agenda item at this point, so we can get a little bit more organized and precise with our answering, so everybody's on the same page moving forward. But we've already passed the payment. We'll get you your information and then we'll move on from there.
Is that a yes or a no?
For, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Item number seven, report and pay request, final, number three, our Dunham and Metro parking lot improvement in amount not to exceed $164,087.25. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have one question. Please tell me all the waivers are done on this one.
I was going to say that.
Yes, sir, all the waivers are done.
All the subcontractors will be paid?
All the subcontractors will be paid.
Mr. Woods.
Is this the final payout with all retention and everything?
Yes, sir. Final payout, all retention. This job had very minimal landscaping, very small patch of grass. It's been inspected and approved.
Okay, so I was bored, so I took a ride through the, the parking lot. And already the parking lot's got four patches in it. Found two areas where the pavement's caving in, where the butts the concrete troughed areas. Couple of good-sized cracks in the, the patch jobs they did are worse than some of that the residents complained about on their driveway. I mean, it's, seems to have some issues, let's say. So I'm a little concerned giving them all the money and then, you know, getting them to come back. I mean, they're a good-sized company. Odds are they would come back, you know? They don't want to lose the business, but I just feel I have to voice those concerns, and I would vote not to approve it. Thanks.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Can we hold back $50,000 on this legally? Do that? I want, can we hold back $50,000? Alderman Woods, would you say $50,000 would be enough possibly to fix those problems?
I would say it probably be five to 10,000 would be okay.
Okay, let's be on the safe side. Could we lower it to, take 20,000 out of that?
That would be fine with me.
Mayor, please.
Lou.
Yes, sir.
What's the warranty on this parking lot?
They have provided a written guarantee in accordance with the city's standard specifications. I believe they have a three-year written guarantee. It's in the packet, I believe.
Okay, and could we take a look at this before next week's council meeting? Somebody get out there?
Sure.
But then that thing maybe still would like to take 20,000.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. We have second. I guess we need to rescind the motion.
We can amend the motion.
Amend the motion to keep 20,000?
Oh, 20,000 less.
All right. I'll amend the motion to hold $20,000 out of, out of this bill. Does this, who is the secondary, may I ask? Are you willing for a secondary, hold 20,000 right now, Mr. Woods? Go ahead.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
So they're guaranteeing, warranting the project for how long?
I believe it's a three-year guarantees, what the city's typical guarantee has been. I haven't actually gotten to that piece of paper yet, but I believe it's in the packet here.
I guess my question is, what's our comfort factor that they're going to come back and perform some work for us?
Well, I'm personally, you know, it's a pretty reputable firm. It's been in business for a while, large paving contractor, does a lot of business with the city. Seem to be a good firm.
I mean, could we do something where you contacted them, gave them a list of the, you know? One of you guys go and look and verify what I'm saying. Write a letter to them, let them commit to it personally. You know, I, I don't want to get into all the accounting issues or, or, you know, last minute. I mean, if that's what we have to do, is hold 20 grand to get them to do something, I will. But, you know, if they're giving us a warranty or a guarantee, they should stand behind it. They, like you said, they're a big company. And if you contact them and agree to it before we give them the check, I, I think that we can reasonably be assured.
We can do that, sir.
Thanks.
So.
If that's okay with everybody else.
So, I mean, so are you, I rescind my motion, I, I re-added to my motion, hold 20,000. The secondary was you. Are you not, not, don't want to change it? That's fine.
I don't want to change it.
Okay. So go back to the original motion. I mean, could, could you just read that motion? The original motion, wasn't it just to, thus approve $164,087.25? That was the original motion, right? All right, strike all the other language that was amended and all that other stuff. All right, let's do a roll call vote on this.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
No.
Alderman Murray Wesley.
No.
All right, that won't make the consent. All right, item number, Mr. Woods.
Just want to clarify that we're going to follow up and we are going to hold the check until we get a commitment from them to repair the issues. And you, you'll go out and look at it, or some, one of the, your guys will go out and look at it.
Yes, sir, I understand you, and that's what we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
Will that be the first thing to my mind?
Well, maybe the second.
Well, because.
I'll see what I can do.
It's on the.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda to be paid out next week.
I'll get somebody out there tomorrow.
Okay. All right. Let's go, item number eight, my favorite. Report a recognition proposal for GNP Energy to install new LED lights in not the amount of, not to exceed the amount of $72,406. That is my motion. I will look for a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. My favorite. I have a question, actually a couple of questions. How do we miss, let me make sure I got this right. When we started this project, it was done with a grant of 14% savings, I believe. Am I correct? Someone want to help me out here?
Well, when we did the grant initially, there were 357 lights that were done during the first round of replacements.
Okay.
And I believe it works out to about 50% approximately, where the DCO pays 50% approximately. And then the city were, you know, would have to pay the other remaining 50% after we had fronted the money and then a rebate was provided by the DCO.
Okay, let's take a little step back. So we have 350 lights that were done. Correct. We have, so you're saying we got 350 lights in the city of Wooddale that are ours? Am I correct?
What I was referring to is that the previous.
That ain't what I'm referring to. How many streetlights do we actually have in the city of Wooddale?
I do not know.
I will turn it over to our expert on the GIS, which comes out to 600.
It's 602, sir.
All right, so 602 lights. Let's go back here. We did 350 of the city lights. So where is the other amount that did not get done? How did we miss those? Knowing that our GIS system shows 602. So you only did 350. So my question is, why did we not do 602? Because I thought the grant was for the whole entire city LED. Jeff, you, someone care answer that? Go ahead.
Sir, I can, I can speak to some of that, in that there are several lights that are within county and state right-ofways that we were not targeting for replacement, as well as a decorative-type luminaires. They were not being considered for this program.
Okay.
Out of that, no light poles that were not being considered.
Let's, let's back up here again. The GIS system was designated to do all our city streetlights.
Yes, that's correct.
So my opinion, when you do a GIS and you do all the city of Wooddale's streetlights, I would assume the number you just gave me, 602, is exactly what we have in the city of Wooddale, according to my effect. Now you're sitting here telling me that some of these lights may be the state and county. So why would they be counted in to our GIS, knowing that they are not our lights? And then the other follow-up, but, go ahead.
Those lights are yours, but they're in state and county right-ofway, and you need to have permits to modify them and do different things with those light poles. So they do belong to the city, but they're there by permit. So I just want to clarify.
All right, then let's go back this. So where are these 100 some lights that we have to do, 100? Let me get this straight. Found to install 122, 122 new lights, another 122. So where are these lights at? Are these on county or state? Okay, go ahead.
They're part of the local system.
Okay.
89 of them is in the Chancery Business Park.
Okay.
14 of them's around Severt, and then the remaining are by the pedestrian bridge and on Front Street.
Okay. So here's my dilemma with this. We missed all these entire lights. Obviously, it is going to cost us to finish this whole project, the city's portion, because I believe the grant money is no longer available. Okay, do you care to address that? I mean, this is demanded in the, the light project, okay?
Use this as Price Sowers, you know, from GNP Energy who we're working with.
Price.
Here you go, Price.
The 14% you alluded to a moment ago.
Yes.
Was an additional, what, what is termed a sweet deal incentive.
Okay.
That actually expires today on Valentine's Day. DCO named it around with the idea of Valentine's.
So I would lose 14%?
No, you're, you, the, the 14%, you are being paid on for the first 357 lights.
But not these.
Not for this, because the project needs to be completed by today.
Okay, so when?
So you're, you're going to get the normal, the normal DCO incentive amount.
But not the 14.
Not the additional 14 points, right.
My question is, when did we find out about these lights? When did we find these lights?
I can answer that.
Okay.
When I ran out of the 357 lights during the first phase of the installation.
And how many weeks ago was that?
That was back in December. I think we finished up the job in.
So.
December-ish.
This, so we finished this up in December, which you said, and, and, believe me, they look good. I'm not knocking your project. So if we would have had this back in December, I still would have been able to take advantage of that 14%. Am I correct?
If I would have been able to manufacture and physically install the fixtures, that would have been, that, the answer would be yes.
But, let me go back here. If we were approved in December, would you have been able to manufacture fixtures in time for us to get the 14% additional?
More than likely.
So, let's go back to the staff problem. We knew of this in December. Why was it not brought to us sooner? We are in February with the deadline of losing 14%. So someone needs to ask me, what staff might have blew this, and why wasn't it brought to us in December? And you can't, you, you can't lean on our new Public Works Director because he was not here. So my question is, how do we take advantage of is now going to cost this extra, well, whatever, the 14% that we won't be entitled to now? So why wasn't it brought to our attention in December or January? Mr. Murmurs.
We were still trying to figure out what was going on with, why didn't we have the original amount of lights correct?
So we dragged our feet because we didn't have the original amount of lights, and we lost the opportunity to get a 14% discount or whatever you want to call incentive, all right, well, whatever. 14% because we were going back and forth on trying to figure out what happened to those 122 lights. Mr. Murmurs.
Well, I'm not saying that's the only reason why. There are multiple reasons why, but.
Well, I'm, I'm here discussing this right now, so why else?
I'd prefer not to go over those on camera.
Huh?
I'd prefer not to go over those right now.
Why?
Okay, well, it was basically me running the Public Works Department and me running the city all at the same time. I had no help, no engineering, you know, help, nobody to go to, other than Baxter and Woodman, who could have possibly messed up the scenario first off. So I had to wait until I had somebody else on board to help me coordinate and try to figure this whole disaster out, while Price also wasn't guaranteeing me that he could get it all done at one time before the February 14th deadline. They all had to be in and installed, so there were a multitude of issues.
Mr. Price, we'll take the mic.
I would just like to add in Jeffrey's defense, that particular week was, Jeffrey had a death in his family and was gone for about a week, I want to say. Okay, so there was no one for me to speak to regarding that.
But, I will take it back here again. You're right, we didn't have a Public Works Director, but we had an intern Public Works Director that was assigned to the city to move forward with the projects. We also had a mayor that could, took the lead on this and did something about it. You know what? I'll sit here and, and maybe approve this tonight, but I will tell you, if this happens again, because we are losing 14%, a break on this. We are costing taxpayers additional 14%. I don't care how you look at it, incentives or whatever. Mr. Woods, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Woods at this time.
Thank you. My question goes to the start of, you know, how we, how we arrived here. I mean, we have the GIS system. My first question is, how hard is it to ascertain how many streetlights there are? How long does that take?
It doesn't take long, sir. It takes about five minutes.
Okay, so I'm confused then, on how we were short at the 100. I, I just don't get it. I mean, somebody's got to explain it to me. I don't get it.
Alderman, I, I've asked our staff, you know, exactly what numbers were given. I don't have some of the staff on board now that I did back then. They actually asked those people who may have been involved where that, where the number was generated. My existing staff here, I, I have not been able to determine where that number came from.
Okay, so an effort to get through this. Did we supply the number to the contractor? Or did the contractor come up? To the contractor, or did the contractor come up with their own?
We did supply the number.
Okay, so. I mean, we got to look through it. I guess there's no sense rehashing it, but I mean, somewhere we, we. My frustration is, we have the systems in place, we have the technology, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to put it in place. And we didn't use it. I mean, everything just fell through the cracks. I, I just, if we could look into that and figure out what happened, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Alderman, Mayor please.
Okay, we've got 122 lights. You said you did 350 and do another 122, it only brings us to 472. There's still another 130. I'm not understanding what's going on.
Go ahead.
Those lights that are remaining, sir, are on Irving Park Road, on Central, they're in the county right-ofways. Some of them are decorative luminaires that wouldn't necessarily be replaced with this system. And some would require I dot permitting or county permitting that has not been applied for at this point. Would require some work to convince the state that, that they can use these type of luminaires on their, within their right-ofway. They don't currently do L E D lighting within their right-ofways.
Okay, so basically, the ones that are left are all those public right-ofways which we own.
Correct.
The other ones, I mean, right, I'm just at a loss. We have 100, we have this G I S. Months ago, this came up, I don't know, over the summer last year when we finally passed this. Why do we have a G I S if we're not going to use it?
Go ahead.
Just to maybe comment on that, the last couple of weeks, from my vantage point. In our dealings with the county, in our dealings with a whole host of different issues as it relates to the northern corridor of our community. I have found the G I S system to be absolutely essential. I, I, I guess, I understand here that people are disappointed that there was overlooked and missing data. And an exchange that took place back in August. I brought this here tonight because I think it's a good program. I think it's a necessary program. I still think the community gets to benefit from a grant. And I, and I hope that, you know, some errors that took place by the team. Won't continue to mar what is otherwise a, a good program. Had they been included, yes, you're right, that we would have saved some money. I guess, that's not the case. There was a mistake made. And to the extent that, you know, we could remedy that, I'm sure we would want to do that. But tonight here again, what's before you is, do you want to move forward with this and continue to green the community? If so, here's the proposal, here's what it costs.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Mr. Director. I understand that what you just said is a mistake. This council shouldn't be sitting up here trying to dig out where the mistake is. This director is, is a city man, if it was a mistake, the city manager feels that it was a mistake. It's the city manager's responsibility to inform us that there was a mistake. I don't see anywhere, any memo from the city manager or the public works director. That we made a mistake and we missed them. And we paid how mu, this G, yeah, this program's been in effect for how long? For counting these lights and counting the fire hydrants and the trees and everything else, correct? That's the same system, right?
It's the same system. I don't know what year the streetlights were added to the base layer map. I don't recall.
So, I guess my question is to, is through Baxter and Woodman, right? How do I know that? That what, what we're paying for to make sure every hydrant's counted and every trees and. You know, I make fun of the counting these trees because you, you move one and you don't have one, but. I'm questioning the accountability of your company. That you cost the taxpayers that you missed these lights. And you don't have staff to answer to, but you are this, one of the CEOs of the company. And I'm putting you just as much as blame as the city manager.
The lights are in the map. That's not the question. The base map's correct. The lights have been verified, they're counted, they're in the map.
You're not a count?
They're in the map. The count of the lights is correct.
Then I miss them where, how you miss them?
Again, I would prefer not to do this on camera. I mean, there was a mistake that was made. It's been addressed.
That's fine.
I don't know what else you want me to say.
Alright, you got it. Mr. Woods?
I'm going to go to, I know we touched on this, the difference in the number of lights. We're going to do 122 now, which leaves how many ever? The mayor said 150. Those are in the county right-ofway or state roads. We don't know what their. You know, appetite is for replacing them. Well, we're actually replacing them, we're doing the money. Correct me if I'm wrong, the state's on a push for energy efficiency, aren't they? Changing the traffic signals to L E Ds, so they must be acceptant of the idea. So while we're making, having the conversation, shouldn't we just bring everything into the fold? If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. Instead, it seems like we're, for one reason or another, piecemealing it. Unless you're, I'm completely wrong and it, we're never going to get it done.
Go ahead.
Alderman, I'm not saying you're completely wrong. I'll just say that the state has very stringent requirements on the illumination levels and. That the lights out there provide light for the highway. Their, their first responsibility is to the highway users. And they have not accepted these lights for use in the highway. It will require submittals and testing and approvals from the state prior to the installation of those lights. Now, that can be done, but that will take some time. In addition, the county as well has not used these lights and same type of process. They're going to want to test the lights out and it will be some time to do that, but it could, it's possible. It just hasn't been done.
So at, at this time, what you're saying, it's, you know, 2% chance we'd get it done. It's not worth barking up that tree right now?
I guess I would just say that it is going to be a long and lengthy process before the luminaires approved by the state. And I, I wouldn't recommend.
Of which case, it wouldn't fall under this program. We can't do it, so.
The city could certainly pursue the permitting of these luminaires and start the work to get that done. We have not initiated that work yet. I'm not recommending you do or you don't. I'm just saying that that's been done.
And, and the whatever, 122 lights, is that the correct number? And that completes all the other lights that we can do that are under our control?
That is exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
In true dollars, what are we talking about that it's cost the city because of our 14%? What, what are you looking at?
About 10 grand.
$10,136, is that correct?
Something like that.
Yeah.
10, 10 something.
You know, I would feel better and I sure, I, I would think the whole council would feel better if we kind of had an answer. And I understand what you're saying, Jeff. You would, you don't want to say this on camera. But if you can assure us that we have an answer to this. Because my concern is, the same as everyone else, is how do we know our fire hydrants are accounted for and our trees accounted for? I do know that we have to do this, so I'd like to call for a vote on this, but at the same time, I, I, I sure would like to have an answer. As to how this happened and so it won't happen again in the future? Or it won't happen again with any of the other counts that we have? Thanks.
Mr. Coles?
Yes. Well, on the L E lights, it was brought in by this Clean Air Act that we, Clean Air Committee that we have. And that's how it started. And that's. First, we had a guy come in with portable lights and showed us how bright it was. I think it was your company. And. He came in twice, showed us, and then we brought it here to get okayed by the council that we install some, some lights. So I think they did the parking lot first. And then they, we got all that money extra with the, with the funds. And from the government, we decided to do the whole city. But, as I say, each one of them had to have a special piece made for the lights. And that took a little while and. Eventually, they'll get all, all fixed. I mean, I'll put up, but you got. The production was probably a little too hard. He was probably running two, two, two or three shifts to try to get all these lights. Because he had another, another town to do. And that's one of the reasons why we fell behind. And as far as I'm concerned. We've lost 14% many, many times. Go in the engineering department and look at all the stuff that we tested, we've had engineered, sitting on the shelf that costs more than 14%. I don't know why we keep calling about 14%. I know it's, it's about 10, 15,000 dollars. It's a lot of money, but still. We've spent a lot of money on other things too. So, as far as I'm concerned. The lights, when they get ready to put them in, I, I would suggest we put them in.
Woods?
Jeff? The 72,406 dollars, where's that going to come from? Because it wasn't in the budget.
Still going to come out of the C I P from additional funds that were still left over in there. We actually did get some extra funding back that we didn't originally account for, for other L E D reimbursements that weren't part of the original program. We installed some L E D lights in the train station parking lot. We weren't originally planning on applying for funding through that. Mr. Sowers helped staff in that regard as to apply for that funding. That was about four to 5,000 dollars, which is about the same amount that we lost here. So, not saying that we shouldn't have got all the money, but if that makes anybody feel any better, probably doesn't. But we did get some extra monies. And we do have money budgeted for those.
We're, we're covered. And I, and I just have to, one comment to Alderman Coles, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but. Just because we lost 14,000 before doesn't mean we should lose it again. It's never a good reason, because we did it in the past. Thanks.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Mr. Manager, well, we have that report on what happened in the morning in our packet. And I don't, I understand your situation of that you didn't have a public works director. At that time, but there's no reason that was the choice of your decision.
I'll give you a report, no problem.
Tomorrow morning? Or tomorrow, in the packet?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Alright, let's call for a roll.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't considered future meetings. God, I forgot what we were going to talk about. Oh, update on treat.
Policy on waivers.
The policy on waivers? The update on treatment plant, which we will have. What, what else? Alderman Roy Wesley?
The policy and waivers, when are you going to? Put that on for next month?
Next committee.
It will be next committee?
Well.
We have budget.
Here, here's the thing. I would ask that it goes to the following committee. Because here, here's the reason, we, we, we've gone bury ourselves in committees. We, we already put something else in there, committee, the next committee is mainly budget. I mean.
Well, since we don't have a policy. And legally, we don't. I can't hold back checks or anything though, as a council, an approval of. Giving permission to the, to the finance department to, until we get that. I mean.
Okay.
You, you follow what I'm saying? See, because we don't have nothing.
Well, I think staff has direction on definitely what we're looking for. I think Mr. Gallus has already made it clear that he is going to get all waivers.
I will see that.
And, and you should, chairman and finance, vice chair will receive them. They have the direction and I don't think we're going to have a problem with waivers, but we, we still need to discuss it.
So.
With budget coming in.
Alright, any other, Mr. Woods?
I was just going to add to, if we don't have the waivers, I believe by the contract, you can hold the payment. Because it's not due, so that, that's your hammer.
Right, I will. Any other items? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Coles, motion carries. Five minutes.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman Shockey. Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Coram present, please stand in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one item under public works, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will obtain a motion to approve a contract amendment number one, H R Green. Not to, not to exceed the amount of 249,459 dollars and zero cents for phase two engineer service. For Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road intersection safety improvement. That will be my motion, Mayor.
Second. Roll call.
We don't have questions?
Question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Since we just talked about waivers and stuff, is it in the contract about waivers and about subcontractors?
Mr. Hogan?
There is a certification statement for design contracts that we write that we use I dot standard invoices. And it normally says, as far as what Jeff and Rich were mentioning, as far as as a prime consultant, you certify. That you're going to be paying your subcontractors. We actually have sub consultant agreements with all our subs. And there's language in there to safeguard the sub consultants and H R Green. That when H R Green gets paid, we pay the sub consultants within a certain timeframe. So with that being said, with this contract to date, we've only had one sub consultant, McCleary, that was doing the geotechnical work for us. They've completed that work back in October, November. They provide their final report. We have paid them for the 19,000 dollars for their contract amount. And they have completed their work and they've been fully paid. So. As a project manager on a job, it's very important, especially when I'm dealing with an I dot or tollway contract where I have D B sub consultants involved. Where on a hundred thousand dollar invoice and so on, disadvantaged business companies. That are part of I dot tollway contracts where if they're certainly doing all that work and they don't have, they don't. They can't afford to have the float as far as the payment out there if they provide services for a long period of time. So, in general, H R Green and myself as a project manager, when I receive a sub consultant's invoice, I process it immediately. And the, the language in our contracts with our subs is pay when paid. And we turn that around as quickly as possible.
Follow it? I don't think that answered my question. The question is, yes or no, yes or no? Is it in the contract with H R Green? That waivers will be from subcontract too? Maybe a public works director can help you with this. On my, on the question I'm asking. Will we see the waivers before the bill's paid? Well, we see the waivers before the bill's paid, I think that's where it's coming from, to make sure you pay your subcontractors. I mean, it has to be stated in the contract. Mr. Gallus? You wanna take this? Put two, put one sentence in the contract, then, I don't care, but the- Go ahead.
Waivers are typically utilized on construction projects, he is currently designing that intersection on our behalf, so when they go to construction, when they're done designing, in their design contract with the person who will build that intersection, there will be a clause in there that says waivers are required of all subcontractors prior to payment being issued.
So when it goes to construction? If he's designing it, there won't be any subcontractors? Go ahead, Mr. Gallus.
No waivers of lien that are typically in the transaction for design services to a client.
Okay. You got it? Okay. Mr. Woods? Alderman Woods, I'm sorry.
That's not true, you're telling me that no subcontractor, engineering subcontractor would ever file a lien?
Provides an invoice to us, we sign off of it, we submit the sub's invoice with our invoice, and we sign a certification statement that essentially, when we get paid, and we have subconsultant agreements, that we pay our subconsultants when we receive payment.
Correct, I mean, that's, that's my understanding, and that's why I kept drilling down on the questions, that all the other contracts are similar, 'cause most of them are boilerplate anyway, so in fact, we don't get the waivers prior to issuing the check, we issue the check in good faith to the general or prime contractor or prime engineer, he then gets, pays his subs, they, I'm sure during even exchange, come get your check, you give me my waiver, and then later, you turn in the waivers to the city, that's my understanding of how things are happening.
Go ahead.
I guess what I can say with, like, a typical IDOT project like this going through local roads, is that typically, we're required to provide IDOT with a copy of the subconsultant agreement with our subs, that has that language to indicate paid when paid, and IDOT has that record on file to make sure that we're following our subconsultant agreements.
Alderman Woods, you have follow?
Well, yeah, I mean, you just agreed with my statement, again, that would imply that we do not get a waiver till after you're paid, let's say, a week later, we all have these agreements we sign saying we're all gonna pay each other, but in fact, we don't have the legal paper saying, yeah, we were all paid and we release all claims until sometime, whether that's one week or two weeks down the road, I'm just trying to confirm what the system is that we're using, so everybody understands it.
Mr. Hogan? Go ahead.
As far as design contracts go, it's not a typical process that we provide that information to, like, a municipality, but our accounting group has that record, I've got access to that record when we pay our subs, and if the city requires that to be provided to them when we pay our subs, we can certainly provide you with that documentation. Otherwise, it's really a good faith trusting your consultant that he's paying your subs, but I understand the whole conversation tonight about what's happened in the past with lawsuits and so on, and you're trying to be covered, so, what I'm saying is, I can certainly work with our accounting department if the city requests for that documentation to show that when we get paid, we're paying our subs.
Okay, and-
Go ahead.
All I'm saying, and I think Alderman Roy Wesley would agree, we just wanna know what the system is, if that's it, working, this isn't to you, this is directed to Public Works Director and to the city manager, whatever system's in the place, that we understand it, and somebody's actually following the system, I think part of the issue is, we all have a different understanding of what it is, and so everybody's proceeding in slightly a different direction, although in general, in the same direction, and that's all, thank you.
Any other questions?
I got one.
Alderman Coles?
The only thing that I'd make sure that you do is you put a left turns, turning lane off of Wooddale Road onto Irving Park when the trains are there, instead of lining cars up on Wooddale Road, have the guy that's running the computer, at least when everything stops, you got a left turn, that's the only thing I ask you for.
That-
The rest, the rest is your design.
That was clearly indicated in the Phase One report as being a problem with congestion as far as when the gates are down, that essentially, there's an all red, the new traffic signals controller and what we're doing with the railroad timing with the signals is going to allow for that green arrow, so when the gates are down, people on Wooddale Road heading northbound can make that left turn movement.
No, 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 heading west off of Wooddale Road, not north.
Well, they're facing north.
Correct, that's correct.
Facing north, but going west.
Yeah.
Going west.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Anything, Alderman Roy Wesley? I haven't, I won't call the roll.
According to Alderman Woods, with this, it's kinda like a waiver, is it notarized? Do we? So it'll be notarized and everything, too, right?
Mr. Hogan or Mr. Gallus?
Or am I just gonna get a piece of paper with a name and?
I'm assuming our accounting department obviously cuts a check to our subconsultants, so if you need a copy of the check that we sent to our subconsultants-
I just need a paper that's saying it was paid and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry to put you in this predicament, but you see what we walked into?
I've never encountered this before, and, you know, I understand why you're concerned about it now, but-
Concerned.
You know, in general, with tollway, IDOT, whatever client I've ever dealt with, you know, it's just standard practice, is our company and whatever company I always worked for is obviously to pay our subconsultants, have those subconsultants, in fact, the subconsultants want for their own benefit and security to have a subconsultant to make sure there's language in there to make sure that they're gonna get paid when we get paid.
Well, I'm, okay, I'm sorry to put you through this, but as Vice Chairman for the Treasurers Department, it just seems like we're gonna have to be a little more careful in how we do and things, to make sure that we get everything. Since, nothing more.
We have motion, a second, roll call.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lozaro?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.